Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Happy Valentine's Day. We're glad you're here. We had a meeting before this, so we're getting started a little late. Called to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, February 14th, 2017. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Belval, not present. Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. We'll begin, as always, with the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Dr. Messenger.
President Fuqua, members of the board, and those who have gathered this evening, welcome. So I'll keep my comments brief because obviously we have others who would like to make comment this evening, but I do want to mention that last week, representing the Colorado Association of School Executives and the Rural Alliance, I gave testimony on Senate Bill 61, which is the legislation we've been following with regard to charter schools. And I think the position we took for those two organizations consistent with our position of opposition as well. Specifically, I spoke to local governance and local control around decisions with regard to the allocation of levies, which is what this bill deals with, to charter schools. So that was the essence of the comments that I delivered. Members of the Senate Education Committee had some questions to come back, and really they also focused on that area of governance and whose responsibility it is to make decisions around that. I stress that we have locally elected board members who represent our community. It's local tax dollars that pay for levies and local decisions around how those dollars should be spent. So I know we'll have future conversation locally on that, and pretty confident it'll pass out of Senate Ed tomorrow and probably pass through Senate as well. So if we are able to defeat that piece of legislation, it will rest on the House side of the legislative body. So we'll keep you informed. I know you're following that through Chalkbeat and other resources. I would just, on legislative issues, comment as you are, we're tracking lots of the bills right now. We have changed the format for our weekly legislative update, so if you've had a chance to read that, you've noted that. We've moved from giving sort of a taste of multiple bills that we're tracking to trying to do single topics. So we've picked some single topics that we think are significant as we work through the legislative session, including most recently the Gallagher Amendment, which may well affect our school funding this upcoming year. So if you have feedback on that, please share it with us. We do have a link on that that is the Bill Tracker, which is, so if people want to go in and get the status of a bill, that's still there and pretty convenient. So anyway, we've gotten some positive feedback. Our lobbyists are working with us on that. And my final comment for this evening, President Fuqua, would be that we are in the hiring season. Specifically, right now, we're working on filling administrative positions. We did interviews with the finalists of Centaurus High School earlier this week. I sent you a note, or Sandy did, I guess, or Ron, on our English Language Development Director. So we're working through some of our central office positions. And then we are posting other vacancies as they occur. And then, in the not-too-distant future, of course, we'll start in our hard-to-hire teaching positions, as well as all of our teaching vacancies coming up. So in my report on that, Sam, I'd be glad to answer any questions of the board on those topics or any others. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Messenger. Any questions for the Superintendent? All right. Why don't we move then?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We'll move quickly to public hearing and public participation. Welcome all of you who are here to share your thoughts with the board. We recognize the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour of public comment, we'll continue at the end of the meeting. We have a lot of people signed up. We might hit the hour mark, so please keep your comments to time so that the folks can potentially make their comments at the front of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Board President may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium. It starts at green when your two minutes begins, turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. We'll take our speakers who have signed up to address us on agenda items first, and we always give students front of the queue. So Riley Judd, you are first on the agenda. Riley, are you here?
Hi.
Come on up. And good evening. Welcome. Yeah, go ahead, up to the microphone, yeah.
Well, my name is Riley Judd. I'm a student you just heard. And I go to Broomfield High School. I am a sophomore. And I am here representing the One2Web program here at Broomfield. We implemented this program last year. We started with my class, the freshman class, receiving Chromebooks for our school, for our class. And I think I just really wanted to stress the importance and how meaningful these Chromebooks have been to our classroom and just how much our learning has been enriched because of these Chromebooks. And this year, the incoming freshmen, they received Chromebooks as well. Just the ability to really use the Chromebooks as a tool has been so essential, and I think it really should be something that the school district considers as one of the priorities for allowing students and setting aside funding for these programs because it's just been such a meaningful experience and so essential to our learning. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on agenda items is Andrew Paulson. Mr. Paulson, are you here? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, Superintendent Messenger and board members. Thank you for giving me a moment of your time. My name is Andrew Paulson. I'm a special education teacher at Boulder High School. And I've been a special education teacher for 11 years. And during that 11 years, I've worked with students with, you know, in all disability areas, from math, reading, writing, all the way up to students with autism and students with severe emotional disabilities. And then, you know, we've seen a real shift in instructional pedagogy over the past few years. We've seen, we're starting to move from lecture-based, textbook-centered tech instruction more to student-centered instruction, looking at their interests and helping them, you know, guide them so they can further their education related to those interest areas. And I really believe that technology is key in helping all students, and especially students with disabilities, achieve to the fullest of their potential. Right now, in Boulder High School, 50% of our ninth-grade students who are currently earning Ds or Fs in their core curriculum areas are reading below grade level. In special education, sometimes these students, I wouldn't even say sometimes, oftentimes they are reading at an elementary level. Technology really helps us level that playing field. It helps students with reading disabilities access high-level texts at the high school level, oftentimes 11th grade and up-level texts, that normally they wouldn't be able to. It helps students with writing disabilities use speech-to-text apps to capture their thoughts, which a teacher can then help the student shape into a fully-realized piece of writing. It helps students with ADHD-related executive functioning disabilities stay organized and keep track of their schoolwork. It allows students with severe autism, who are often unable to speak, express themselves using text-to-speech technology. In short, technology helps students with disabilities fully access the myriad learning opportunities that a typical school day offers. For a fee of $45 a year to help support the Wanda Web Initiative, I feel that we could really help these students reach their fullest potential, which seems like a pretty good investment to me. I hope you feel the same. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bethany Schmidt. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, school board and superintendent. I am Beth Schmidt. I'm currently the One2Web Coordinator at Centaurus High School. And in the spirit of Valentine's Day, I was here to tell you what I love about One2Web and to speak in favor of the One2Web fee. Centaurus is proud to be one of the pilots for this district's One2Web initiative. In my work, I have the privilege to interact with students, parents, and staff about educational technology. I have a really fun job. Students and parents are enthused about Chromebooks and educational technology, and it's how it's helping their students learn and succeed. I see our students, I see our teachers try new things every day, engaging students at a high level and embracing the opportunity to help students to be creative, to collaborate, to think critically, and to communicate their complex ideas. I see the transformation of education happening every day in our building. It's exciting to be part of innovative work of our district and of the Centaurus staff. One of the most important aspects of the One2Web program to me personally and to my community is how it addresses issues of equity. Our community is diverse. We have low-poverty students in our area, as well as students of very high income, from high-income families. The digital divide cannot be ignored. A program like One2Web provides equitable opportunities and access for all students in our school community. Equity is more than who has a device. It is also the disparity between students who have access to technology and Internet resources outside of the school day. Learning doesn't happen just from 7:30 to 3:30. It doesn't happen just at the school. Learning happens all day long, everywhere, anywhere a student with, a student needs to be. Our students are reaping the benefit of being able to study when they need to, what they need to, and as many times as they need to, often in a variety of ways. The One2Web fee is crucial for the continuation and expansion of the One2Web program. Without the fee, it will not be possible for the school communities that are interested and ready to participate.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirk Quitter. Principal Quitter, welcome.
Good evening, board. Dr. Messenger, Happy Valentine's Day. I wanted to speak on the One2Web initiative as well and share.
Do you want to identify yourself?
Yes, Kirk Quitter, Principal of New Vista High School. Thank you. I know I only have two minutes, but there's a few big points I wanted to share with you because I think this initiative is so important, not only for New Vista but for the district. Firstly, I see an institutional equity issue. When I see Riley's excitement at Centaurus for the learning that's happening there and the technology that my colleagues can put in the hands of their students compared with what's happening at New Vista, there's a big difference. Our classroom computers are 10 years old, and that's fine. Our teachers have made the choice to spend every dollar that we have and every technology point that we have to make sure we can get Chromebooks for students. And that comes at a cost, and that cost is a lack of other technology to provide opportunities for students. So we're, you know, so I think we're at a deficit in providing those rich environments and those opportunities for students. Secondly, you know, we've been talking a lot about data privacy. Right now, we have 150 Chromebooks. We have 300 students. One student might be logging into five or six different devices throughout a day, completing homework on their private, personal device, and I think that creates a lot more problems for safeguarding PII and safeguarding the digital privacy of our students. I think having a device that can be managed by the district and that is standardized across the district would go a long way in helping us secure digital privacy for all of our students. And then, thirdly, just the issue of equity. We talk about a digital divide and we talk about, and we talk about an opportunity gap, and in many cases, those are the same students that we're talking about. So I think this initiative gets at both by putting technology in the hands of kids who need it the most. So I would urge you to look at this initiative and pass it for the good of all of our learners. And I'd be happy to share more with you, and I invite you all to New Vista to see what we're doing there as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We'll move now to speakers on non-agenda items, and we do take students first so they can get home and do homework or sleep or those other important things. So we'll start with Mia Scholl. Mia, are you here?
Yes.
Is Mia Scholl here? Okay, going once, Mia? Nope, okay. Our next student speaker on non-agenda items is Aiden Dedrick, or Diedrick? Aiden, are you here?
Yep.
Oh, you're hiding. Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Good to see you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Aiden Dedrick Fodeman. I go to Jeremontosori. I am in third grade. I think owls are great and do not, they didn't do anything to cause them to do, we didn't do anything to, for us to take away their land. So I think that if we take away their land, that would be awful. Maybe we could build some condos in other places. I have a lot of other people who'd like to speak for the owls, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Anya Smith. Anya, are you here? Hi, good evening. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Anya Smith. I'm 10 years old, and I go to BCSAS Elementary School. The world is not perfect. Everyone should know that. There are so many problems in the world to count. We may not be able to fix the world, but we can contribute. These owls should not suffer for something they did not do. Did they make housing too expensive? Did they tear down forests? I'm not saying that humans are bad. I'm not saying that everyone is responsible. But why should we possibly kill these owls for something that they didn't possibly kill for owl, the owls, for something they did not deserve? Something that'll only make them suffer. There are other places where houses can be built. It doesn't have to be one problem or the other. We can fix them both. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Summer. Summer Kopari-Gould.
I'm here.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Summer Kopari-Gould. I'm 11 years old, and I go to Manhattan Middle School. I think the owls deserve to keep their hunting ground because it is their most important source of food, and they were already living there for 30 years. If people bulldoze their land, the owls will all either move or die, and I love owls, so I don't want that. In my opinion, I would much rather have a protected area dedicated to owls instead of 300 affordable apartments that were built on former owl property. Although affordable housing is important for those who can afford other houses, I know a lot of the people that would, I know a lot of people that would really like, like it if it could be relocated onto different property that does not harm any form of wildlife. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Our next speaker is Jake Aloya. I'm not sure if I got your last name right, Jake, but welcome.
Hi, my name is Jake Aloya. I'm a seventh grader at Summit Middle School here in Boulder, and I just want to tell you a few things about the Twin Lakes Owl Preserve. So the Twin Lakes Owl Preserve is home to owls, and they may be animals, but we're animals too. So I understand the importance of affordable housing in society today, but I want to ask you, is it really worth forcing these owls, who, as I said, are animals like us, to either leave their land or die? There are other places in Boulder County where land could be purchased and built upon for homes. What we choose to do in this situation will show our priorities. Do we want these priorities to be money and lands or to be the lives of other animals? Imagine coming home after work and finding that your house has been torn down. Then the next day, going to your, to wherever you work and discovering that that location has been destroyed too. It's the same situation for the owls. We would be taking their home and then taking away the place where they work, or in their case, hunt. This is why we can't destroy the preserve. We have an opportunity here to take a community of wonderful people and have them perhaps create a place, an educational sanctuary for the owls, that could very well generate the same amount of revenue as building the houses would. This, in my opinion at least, feels like a much better option to tearing down their homes and building ones for humans. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next student participant is Ian Feller. Ian?
Am I allowed to stand on this chair?
Sure, yeah. We want to see you. Yeah, be careful, though.
My name is Ian Feller. I go to Birthed Old Elementary School. I'm nine years old, and I'm in third grade. I say the hunting grounds for the owls shouldn't be left alone. Here's some reasons why. First of all, the owls did nothing to us, and why are we here trying to bulldoze their hunting grounds if they did nothing? Secondly, bulldozing the hunting grounds would drive out or wipe out the owls. Finally, bulldozing the hunting grounds for us is wrong. The hunting grounds are for the owls, remember? No. And this is Colorado. There's open space everywhere, and Colorado is built for nature. Instead of apartments, my company, Minecraft Boulders, would like to help design an owl preserve on Minecraft to put into the real world. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. I think that concludes our student speakers to non-agenda items, so we'll move to the grown-ups now. Our first adult speaker, Noel Davidson. Mr. and Mrs. Davidson are here. Hi, welcome. Come on up.
I'm just bringing up your mission and values. My name is Noel Davidson. I'm a mom. I have a six-and-a-half-year-old at Creekside. He is dyslexic. I really struggle with your mission that you mentioned tonight, that all children to thrive. I don't feel that you're meeting that when one in five are dyslexic and they're not being served appropriately. From the Missouri State Representative Kathy Swan, here's some statistics for you. 35% of dyslexics drop out of high school. 35%. And in Boulder Valley, we've got less than 50, they've got less than a 50% chance of graduating. Up to 90% of the prison population is dyslexic. Alcohol and substance abuse problems go along with dyslexia. A large percentage of the juvenile justice system are dyslexic. In addition to my son, I know three other cases that I could talk about on a different night. I know in my running group, a mother of a son that is 18. He just recently graduated out of that 12 percentile rule. But for me, that means we're failing to teach him. He's dyslexic, and it means that the system isn't working. He should not have been in special education his whole life. I have my son's sensei from karate that is dyslexic, and she said the school board hasn't changed in 20 or 30 years, and that's appalling to me. I also know a third grader at Creekside. His mom doesn't have money to help him. He can't read, and he's in third grade. My son came home crying within the first three weeks of school, crying, telling me other kids know more words than him, and it's too hard. Reading is, sorry, I'm going to cry. Reading is the most basic human necessity, but you guys are failing. So I missed, I already met my time, it looks like, but our schools are aging. You build new buildings, but you're not changing your processes to teach kids to read, and that's a big problem. Most of these kids are dyslexic, like 25% of the kids are dyslexic, and you're not using the right processes to teach kids. Owls are great, but kids need to read. It's already affecting my son, and we're going to drain our savings just to teach him how to read because the school system isn't working.
Thank you for joining us. Our next speaker is Michael Busey. Or I hope I got your last name right, sir. Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Busey, and I have a son in third grade, Felipe, who's dyslexic. I'd like to use my time to ask you a few questions. Please keep these questions in the context that one in five children is affected by dyslexia as agreed by the International Dyslexia Association, U.S. Board of Education, and the Colorado Board of Education. In BVSD, that translates to approximately 5,000 children who are on the dyslexic spectrum. Question number one. Since a group of parents last appeared before you nearly a year ago, how many children have been screened for the warning signs of dyslexia using a valid screening tool? Two. In the last year, how many teachers have taken the voluntary dyslexia awareness training offered by the district? Question three. How many children have received Tier Three intervention services using the Barton Structured Literacy Program? Question four. Why do we continue to spend millions of dollars in teacher resources on whole language programs like LLI and Raining Recovery that are not effective for the largest single group of children who are guaranteed to struggle to read? Conversely, why do we only spend pennies on the dollar for structured literacy programs that are actually effective for dyslexic students? If you honestly answer those questions, you'll know exactly why this group of parents is here tonight. Our family's personally seen the benefits of a structured literacy intervention program by an expert. We're relatively new to the district, having moved here in June, and so we hired a private Orton Gillingham tutor for our son during the transition at a cost of $400 a month. The results from six months on this program are measurable and significant. In contrast, we spent the last six months in BVSD trying to get Felipe an IEP in order to obtain services for dyslexia. After months of bureaucracy and countless meetings, we finally have an IEP as of February 3rd. So what do we get for our new learning disability designation? We find out that there's no money or budget to implement the structured literacy program desired by the school called foundations or to train the special education teacher. Please allocate meaningful resources and budget to support the 5,000 children affected by dyslexia.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Trout. Ms. Trout? Good evening. Welcome.
Hi. So I'm Karen Trout, and I stood here about a year ago with more or less the same concerns. This time in the second year of volunteering on the Literacy Intervention Committee meeting, which is currently exploring screeners for the warning signs of dyslexia. What we are not told is, are these screeners going to actually happen? Is there going to be money for the screeners? These are important tools for teachers and for families to know if your child is at risk of dyslexia in kindergarten, when the most earliest intervention can actually happen. Another question I have is why isn't Childfind screening for dyslexia? Surely, it's Childfind's legal requirement and mission. We know that one, that dyslexia is one in five with some range of dyslexia. Is BVSD asking where these dyslexic kids are, who they are? Is BVSD looking for them? Isn't that what Childfind is meant to be doing? The Read Act money? My question is, where is the Read Act money going? What is happening to those kids under the 25% cutoff? And is that money going to be spent on summer camps that have no structured literacy in them at all? So I think that's a good question to know, is where is that Read Act money going? Why is St. Vrain actively collaborating with its parent groups? Last week, they had 53 principals and administrators in a presentation spearheaded by their literacy team with their parents collaborating. They do not have a slogan of the success effect and collaboration with the community, but that is what they are actively doing. There could be as many as 6,000 kids in BVSD with some range of dyslexia, and we need to do something for them.
Thank you.
I really hope I'm not coming back again next year.
Our next speaker is Janine Wire. Ms. Wire, welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to start by reading a passage from Kelly Hulman Sandman's article, "Dyslexia and Odds of Prevention." I recently read an article that suggested that children are not learning disabled until they attend school and fail to adequately learn to read and write. The author referred to this as "school-induced learning disabilities." The article went on to suggest that if those same kids were simply taught the way they learned, they would not only not need special education services, but they would not need a label of "learning disabled" or, as in most cases of learning disabilities, "dyslexia." BVSD's failure to screen kindergartens for the most common type of learning disability, dyslexia, leads to these "school-induced learning disabilities." My seven-year-old son in second grade at Bear Creek Elementary has a "school-induced learning disability." He scored just below grade level on entering on I-Ready at the beginning of kindergarten. He received LLI for the year. We said dyslexia? We were told no. In first grade, he was scoring lower on I-Ready and still offered LLI, but was still not low enough. We again said dyslexia, and we were told no. I am so thankful that we went with our gut and had our son tested and subsequently diagnosed with dyslexia at the end of first grade. At the beginning of second grade, we were told, we told his teacher and the school he was diagnosed with dyslexia. He scored even lower on I-Ready again, just one point above the cut score. He had by now almost achieved the level of "school-induced learning disability." He was again offered LLI- He was again offered LLI for the third year in a row. On his latest I-Ready score, he scored 10 points below the cut score. He now absolutely has a "school-induced learning disability." Had he been screened in kindergarten, he would most likely have been flagged at being at risk for dyslexia. He would never have been given LLI, which the founders, Fontes and Fennell, have said is not an appropriate intervention for dyslexia. He would have received proper interventions for those two-and-a-half years and been at grade level by now. I can only guess how much money the school and the district would have saved, not to mention my son's mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Wager. Or Wagger? Wagger. Sorry. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Liz Wagger. I wanna start off-- my husband said, "Start with my credibility." So I'm a former elementary school teacher. I have my master's in literacy from CU. I've been an active parent volunteer in my children's school since 2003. I have been on SAC teams for all three of the schools that my children have attended. And I have been part of DAC, and I've got to meet many of you, since 2012. I'm currently the DAC rep for Centaurus and Angivine. And I'm part of an Intervention Task Force Committee that's currently meeting of parents and literacy personnel from the district. So I know all about our UIPs and our budget spending priorities, student-based resource allocations, and I strongly believe that the kids we are missing and those that fall into the achievement gap that our teachers and administrators so badly want to help are the one-in-five kids with dyslexia. District-wide awareness, early screening, and a structured literacy program will change the outcomes for these kids and dramatically improve graduation rates through our school system. I'm here tonight, along with several other parents, to ask the board to strongly consider mandatory training for all teachers and administrators about the facts and signs of dyslexia, screening of all kindergartners and new students for warning signs of dyslexia and potential reading difficulties, and a structured literacy program for all K3 students when making your budget decisions this spring. I'm the parent of three children in Boulder Valley, a recent graduate, a junior at Centaurus, and an eighth grader at Angivine. My eighth grader is dyslexic, dysgraphic, and has dyscalculia. And my son has a similar story to so many other kids with these disorders, learning disabilities. He was recognized as just below grade level in first grade, but not low enough for extra interventions. He was completely exhausted after school. We pay-- we were told to wait until third grade. He's making progress. We sought tutoring outside of school, paid for our own diagnosis, and even paid for private, part-time school to meet his learning needs. My son has many caring teachers and wonderful support systems throughout his school years. But that said, he is still not getting the specific structured and sequential literacy instruction that he needs to make grade-level progress. The success effect is what I'm speaking to you about today. To make substantial impact on that learning gap for 20% of our students, it's time to do what Boulder Valley says and take learning to the next level for all these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Celeste Landry. Ms. Landry, welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to try to impersonate Donald Trump. I'm no Alec Baldwin, so please help me by trying to suspend disbelief. UniHill! UniHill, it's going to be tremendous! Believe me! We're going to get CU to pay for it, and they are going to pay so much for it, more than they've ever paid for anything else. And also, we are going to have the total and complete shutdown of the UniHill building. I don't like losers. Those crybabies worrying about saving old buildings, they should just go back to Mexico or wherever they're from. Those UniHill people, they're not you. They're not you. They're bringing pencils. They're bringing science projects. They're students. They're teachers. And some, I assume, are good people. That so-called CU-BVSD collaboration team? That was a bad idea. Just a swamp. A bunch of corrupt people meeting together? Nothing got done. Time to drain the swamp. No more collaboration meetings. No more talking to people. Just like with Mesa and ICANN. No talking. I have a secret plan for UniHill. I know more about UniHill than the staff, than the families, than the neighbors. Believe me. Information? I'm not releasing any information, because, as you know, the feasibility study is underway. I don't think the public cares at all about information. And the appraisals? I don't have to release those. You know, there was a lot of vote fraud in 2014. I guarantee it. If we had promised to sell UniHill in the first place, we would have won 10,000 more votes for the bond. So true. Those UniHill families, the neighbors, Historic Boulder, the League of Women Voters, Mesa Elementary, wanting a conversation? So desperate and so sad. Letters to the editor and guests' opinions? Fake news. All fake news. Everything at unihillsschoolfuture.org? Fake news. I love this school district. You'll be so proud of this school district. We're gonna make BVSD great again.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Dahl. Ms. Dahl, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Dahl. I have a fourth grader at Creekside, my youngest son. As an elementary and reading teacher, I've witnessed over the years a troubling trend where two to four students, on average, per classroom, lag behind their peers and struggle to read and write and spell. I don't see this trend as a failure on behalf of the students, but it's a clue as to what needs to change. As a parent, I'm also here to advocate for my fourth-grade child, who is dyslexic and new to BVSD. A child who loves to learn, he's full of life, yet only three months into kindergarten, he was begging me not to take him to school. After a six-and-a-half-hour school day, my son and I would work for two hours or more at the table every night just to stay afloat. When my son didn't show improvement, his teacher questioned my methods and our homework routine. My son was five years old. This struggle has a name. According to Yale and the National Institute of Health, it affects one in five people, so it should be given the recognition and the understanding that it deserves. Its name is dyslexia. It's not a moving target or an enigma that we'll never understand. It's not an excuse of parents seeking an unfair advantage for their child. It's a learning difference, and with many advantages and disadvantages. Dyslexic learners struggle when forced to learn in a non-dyslexic way. However, when taught in a way geared to how their mind works, they succeed. Susan Barton, founder of the Barton Reading and Spelling System, shared this quote on her website, Bright Solutions. "Fair doesn't mean everyone gets the same. Fair is everyone getting what they need in order to be successful." So I would like to ask you these questions. Are we being fair to all BVSD students and their families? Are all students getting what they need to be successful? Are we screening in kindergarten for dyslexia? And are all BVSD teachers being adequately trained to know what dyslexia is and how to teach to it? In Missouri, at the start of the 2018-19 school year, a statewide system for identification, intervention, and support for children with dyslexia will be implemented. In Finland, their "whatever-it-takes" approach means teachers purposely catch the weak students first. So it's no surprise that they continually lead internationally in reading and math, yet they spend 30% less per student than the US. Do we have the same thinking in BVSD? Do we catch the weak students before they fail? Or must families and students bear the burden alone? Currently, my son is enrolled in BVSD and is not receiving evidence-based instruction or intervention at school for his dyslexia. Despite asking for it repeatedly and having a formal diagnosis, his learning needs are not being met at school. His teacher, despite good intentions, is ill-equipped to know how to help him. Is this really the best that we can do? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Britta Singer. Ms. Singer, welcome.
I was really pleased to read in yesterday's Daily Camera that BVSD has joined the Good Food 100 program. That's a program that lets you know how the food that you consume, you are served, how that food impacts the food system as a whole. The founder of Good Food 100 said, "Transparency is a proxy for trust." That echoes the memo that the Bond Oversight Committee sent to the board last month, stressing the importance of transparency on the issue of UniHill. I congratulate and I thank the principal of UniHill, Ina Rodriguez Myers, who invited members of the public to go to UniHill and see firsthand what the issues are. I went. I learned a lot. And naturally, I have questions. Will the feasibility study be released for public inspection? If so, when? And where? What will be the process for public input? How will it be publicized? And are there deadlines? If the decision is made to sell, is CU the only buyer under consideration? I understand that the school board is permitted by law simply to sell it to CU without exploring other options, but I fear that such a decision is likely to be interpreted as an insider deal. An examination of all the possibilities and full disclosure of how the decision is made will be important to maintain the trust of the community. Transparency is a proxy for trust.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Pentilla. Pentilla? Sorry if I didn't get your name right. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Kim Pentilla, and I serve on the International Dyslexia Association Board for the Rocky Mountain Branch. I am also a parent in BVSD, and I had the honor to teach second grade at a BVSD elementary school. I am currently a teacher trainer in reading. I am here to advocate for heightened awareness and training of dyslexia and learning differences. As you've heard, there's a shockingly high number of students that have dyslexia, one in five, or 20% of our student population has dyslexia across all demographics. The good news is, there are proven instructional methods that reach these students. As we know, reading is fundamental. Unfortunately, a lot of these students are falling behind many grade levels in reading and writing and math. Early intervention is the key. It is much easier to get students as they are younger. So with that in mind, I would advocate for early screening tools for warning signs in all kindergartners-- for all kindergartners across the district, for teacher mandatory, teacher and administrator awareness and trainings for dyslexia and learning differences. Mostly, I advocate for a structured literacy program in all kindergarten through third-grade classes. Not only are these structured literacy programs effective for meeting the needs of different learners, it's effective for all learners, even those without dyslexia. So at a Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three levels. Putting money and investing in teacher training is the most valuable thing that I could see us do as a district. And fourth, on a district level, I advocate for a dyslexia team or committee to decide what are the best things needed, as has currently happened in the St. Vrain School District, so that all children can thrive, as is our mission statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Natalie Moyen. Ms. Moyen? Hi. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Messager, board members. My name is Natalie Moyen. I'm an associate professor of finance at the Lead School of Business at our university here, University of Colorado Boulder. As you know, we've mentioned one in five individuals struggle to varying extent with dyslexia. My son is one of them. Many of those people end up as entrepreneurs. That's the good news. 33% of entrepreneurs are dyslexic, according to Malcolm Godwell's David and Gillette book. But just almost as many end up in the prison system. So it is a first-order question. Would you like your kid to be like Steve Jobs? Or like Steven Spielberg? Or Charles Schwab? Or Whoopi Goldberg? Or Nobel Prize winner Carol Greider? Yes. But they are dyslexic. They have a neurodiversity. And I think that our school district, just like any other school district, would like to decrease the struggle of these people. They all had very hard struggles in elementary school. So I'm here with a business proposition. There are three easy things that can be done. And we can leverage the funds of BVSD through granting agencies. So teacher training. There are many teacher development grants all across the country. The McCarthy-Dressman Education Foundation give $10,000 per year, maximum of $30,000, over three years, April 15 deadline. The Voya Unsign Heroes Award Program, they have $25,000, April 30 deadline. The Colorado Department of Education, which you're well aware of. So second, apart from the teacher training, we need assistive technology grants. We have the Dollar General Literacy Foundation. We have the International Dyslexia Association in our backyard. Finally, the teaching and intervention grants. We have the Don Ken Burns Education Foundation. We have a ton of parents in the room and in the city willing to write these grants with you. Please just let us know. We would love to partner.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yael Cohen, who has been given an additional two minutes from Sue Hirsch. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Yael Cohen, and I've lived in this district since 1985. I sent my kids to school here. They were not dyslexic. So what am I here talking about dyslexia tonight? I have an MA in Special Education. I'm a certified teacher tutor, and I've been a special education advocate for 30 years this year and work all over the Denver metro area in Colorado for that. I taught for a while at a nonprofit private school that's here in Boulder. The people take out-- parents take out second mortgages and pay taxes in addition so their children learn how to read. I'm also the author of a number-one bestseller on Amazon, international bestseller on special education, and I host a national weekly live show on the Facebook page, Get IEP Help. Two weeks ago on that show, on Get IEP Help, which you can go look at, it's episode nine. You can watch as I interviewed the leader of a parent group in Ohio about what they had to do, because nobody would listen and nobody would work with them from their school district, not the board, not the superintendent, not the administration, when it came to their kids' reading. So there, they ended up filing numerous state education complaints, due process suits, and OCR complaints. They didn't want to do it that way. None of these parents want to do that, trust me. But that's not-- and that's not how we want the district to spend its tax dollars. Finally, in that district in Ohio, Finally, in that district in Ohio, they screen all kindergartners as they enter. They teach a program of structured learning to read called Foundations in kindergarten first and second grade. Special education does the intervention piece, and they hardly have any dyslexia after that to end up treating one to one, as we're spending a fortune now to do in our district. They just try and catch the older kids now who didn't have the benefit of those programs. I've been talking about this for 30 years since I became an advocate. It's really time to fix this in our district. And right now, because of the bond issue, because wonderful people in Boulder give that kind of money, there's money to fix this instead of something pointless like reducing class size by one kid per class. In BVSD, when I advocate for a child with dyslexia, it's a royal pain unless the particular teacher has been trained elsewhere or on their own dime and bought their own materials. Kids get a shoddy education when it comes to reading, and that's a far cry from our district's mission, which is, and I quote, "to create challenging, meaningful, and educate, engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives." And maybe we just ought to add to that the words, unless you have dyslexia, in which case, you don't get that mission. When I go into other metro Denver districts and not just St. Vrain, it's much easier to get the kind of intervention the kids need because people are trained. And in one district where they did this research-based foundations program, schoolwide for the younger kids alongside their regular reading curriculum, and double-dosed the kids with IQ scores below 70 with Foundations, even all those kids came out reading at grade level at the end of first grade. That's quite an accomplishment. According to our PRC scores, which we are an amazing district in our state when it comes to English, language, arts, except when we're not, and that's in the area of kids with severe learning disability for reading, who are lower than the state average in both reading and math, and there has not been much growth. That's where the majority of our kids with special ed fall, and we don't do a whole lot for them. Then again, we just have an increase in several hundred more students in the special ed population in BVSD over the last two years, and a lack of funding, which doesn't even start to impact our ability for caseloads, which are going up, and the funding isn't commensurate. Where's the money to come from? The bond money is one. The programs that we're using that aren't working is two. You have a lot of administrators in this district on board, a lot of principals. I met with Sandy Riplinger, with Michelle Brenner from special ed, with Robin Fernandez, and with Angel from literacy, and they are all on board, but they can't do it without the allocation. Please let me just finish. A few years ago, there was an 11th grader in Boulder High School who was reading on a first grade level because of his dyslexia. We managed with administrative, with Deirdre helped us at the time, support to pay a teacher who had been trained in one of the research-based reading programs, who spent her planning periods for the year teaching him. One year later, reading on a sixth grade level. That's what these programs can do when they're research-based for dyslexia. No child in BVSD should feel stupid because they can't read. It's 2017. Please finally make this work. I'll be glad not to advocate anymore. I'll be glad not to tutor anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patty Scholl. Hi, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Patty Scholl, and I'm the mom of an eighth grader who has severe dyslexia. And I'm also an executive coach, and I specialize in implementing change. What I've been hearing are all the solutions, and I see a lot of smart people in this room. And it seems to me that the solutions are out there, and all we need to do is get innovative about how do we create the resources and the time to implement these solutions. I, my daughter was not doing well in public school, so I fundraised and I got her to go to Hillside School. So we're also super, super fortunate that we have a best practice school right here in our own backyard. So as soon as she started attending Hillside School, she was doing two years of reading advancement in nine months. So I want to offer my volunteer. I am an expert at implementing changes, and I recommend we just put together a group of individuals, and we create a breakthrough, and we find innovative ways to implement these solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Kirkpatrick. Ms. Kirkpatrick, good evening, welcome.
Hello. I'm Wendy Kirkpatrick. I'm a parent and also a kindergarten teacher in BVSD. I'm the parent now of two children who are dyslexic, and I'm here today to tell you about how a commitment by BVSD to provide my fourth grader Carter, who's at Lafayette Elementary, with Barton instruction during his school day has had an incredible impact. I gave you a bright, energetic, eager, and confident kid on the first day of kindergarten. Despite talented and empathetic teachers, his early school experience devastated him and our family. He couldn't read, and he knew it. What I got from you was an anxious, defeated, depressed child. At one point, Carter became so anxious and frustrated that he exhibited all the clinical signs of an appendicitis. Stomach pain so severe, he would vomit. After weeks and countless trips to the ER, his pediatrician determined that anxiety and not his appendix was to blame. He was six. Four years, a dyslexia identification, countless letters to his teachers, principal, district level administration, and school board, thousands of dollars, and hundreds of hours of advocacy later. I am happy to report that that once anxious six-year-old has turned into a happy, confident, and literate 10-year-old. After two years receiving free intervention from a retired teacher, BVSD decided a policy prohibiting retired teachers from volunteering, and instead offered us Barton delivered by a certified teacher during Carter's school day. The three years that Carter has gotten access to a dyslexia intervention during his school day has changed his life. Instead of having to fit in tutoring after school and on the weekends, Carter can come home from school and get on his bike and gather his neighborhood friends for a game of street hockey. Instead of playing catch-up this summer, he gets to go to summer camp and to the swimming pool. I can take him on a three-week road trip and hit every national park from here to the Carolina coast. He can spend time with his cousins at the beach. We have time to sit down for family meals and movie and game nights. Your decision to provide Barton during his school day has changed our lives. My request is for every dyslexic child to get that same level of intervention. My hope is that I won't have to write letters and speak at board meetings every year for the next 11 years to ensure that Carter and his brother Walker, who's in first grade, and every dyslexic child in BVSD get access to an evidence-based intervention for dyslexia during their school day. My children at Lafayette Elementary have champions in their teachers and principal. Now they look to you to be their champions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Kulik. Hi, good evening. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Ashley, and I'm one of the founders of Dream Tank, which is a youth entrepreneurship program here in Boulder. And I'm also a mentor to some of the amazing children that you heard speak tonight. And I'm here to talk to you about Twin Lakes, and I know you have many important choices to make tonight. And regardless of the city interests and the pressure that's being put on you to sell this land, I'm asking you tonight, on Valentine's Day, to really listen to your heart and then make your decision and your choice. So we have an opportunity here to create a nature preserve for years and generations to come. So Dream Tank and the Boulder Owl Preserve are proposing to you to work with us and partner with us in creating that future. And the world really needs some hope right now. And think of this amazing story of all of these brave children who stood up here tonight and who found out about this issue at Twin Lakes, and it broke their hearts. But they took it upon themselves to do something about it, and they made a documentary, and they came here tonight. And I encourage you to all see it at boulderowlpreserve.org. And I want you to think about the kind of education that we're creating here in this district, and feel all the energy that went into this project and the learning that took place and the filming and finding all of the people who could make it happen, and the agency that they felt when they finished this film and put their call out to this community. And now I want you to imagine, years from now, these children coming back and telling the story to other kids of how they spoke up for what they believe in, and how they could teach other kids about owls and wildlife. So I believe that because of these early memories, it could have a really big impact on our community for years to come. And I'll just leave you with this question of what does BVSD stand for?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heidi Kupari, or excuse me, Dana Pousawski, and then Ms. Kupari will be after that. Hi, good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for being here and for all of the work that you do serving on the board to create the highest quality education for our students. I too work with Dream Tank. I'm a founding partner, and I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and applaud the students who exhibited the courage and care to advocate for what they believe in, which is a trait just as important as any other qualification or ability as an individual, a member of the human species. Speaking on behalf of the owls tonight, I would like to present how we can connect to their brilliance and their genius. Animal totems are really valuable in my life. I really enjoy learning about what different cultures value and learn from species. And the owl is often revered as a wisdom keeper. And so I'm here tonight asking you to use your inner wisdom and heart as much as you're using your knowledge and logical thinking as you move forward in these very pragmatic decisions, but keeping in mind what's really at stake. Because if we choose to move through with the housing and eliminating the owl preserve, that's not something that we can easily recreate. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Heidi Kupari. Is Ms. Kupari here? Hi, good morning, or good evening.
Hi, I'm Heidi Kupari. I'm also one of the co-founders of Dream Tank and the mother of Summer, who was learned about the owls in first grade at Flat Irons Elementary. And her love for owls started and has now manifested in this beautiful production she did with her good friend Anya. And what I wanted to speak about was what I've witnessed when dreams become a goal, when dreams become a lens for education, when passion drives and creates motivation to learn math, to learn literacy, to stand up in front of a city council, or to do a film and do countless editing. These girls took their day off on Friday that they got off from BVSD and edited this film in one day. And they thought that was a long time, and one round of edits is all they needed. And I challenge you to pick up a new technology. They learned Final Cut Pro in one day because they wanted to speak this message to you from a heartfelt place. And I know that the other kids in Dream Tank are very passionate about this idea and are looking at their businesses. And Dream Tank is about launching something you love using business skills, mentorship, and access to technology, that what's possible when they come together and they all want to come up with ways to help. They want to partner with you. And I encourage you to bring their voices forward and integrate them in your plans for this zoned land for education, and have the kids help you create this with all their brilliant ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ken Bytell, who has been given an additional two minutes from Morella Colvas. And this will exceed our one-hour mark, so for the remaining speakers, and there are many, we will get back to public participation after some other items on our agenda. Mr. Bytell?
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Dr. Messenger, board, for your gracious welcome, along with that of Laura's as well. We appreciate that. I'm, I live down by Fairview High School. I'm the chair of Wilderness Conservation for the Twin Lakes Owl Preserve and Open Space. And it was such a privilege to work with Summer and Anya. I have a background in nature and science documentaries, co-produced, directed the show Grizzlies of the Canadian Rockies for Discovery Channel, and used the publicity to create a 100-square-mile piece of wilderness up north where the Revenant was filmed. None of our grizzly bears were in that show, though. And yeah, to film the sections where Summer and Anya found the owl pellets and the joy on their face, and then to watch them seeing the owls in the tree and then fly over their very heads. Beautiful. It was really soul touching to me. And we would like to invite your partnership in bringing this to 10,000 Boulder Valley School District children each year. It's an amazing opportunity. First, a few words about the life cycle of the owls. January is owl mating season. I led nature hikes out there, and you could hear a lot of hooting and discussion back and forth as things went on. And to hear those owls and see them against the full moon talking to each other, it was magnificent. And then February, right now, she is laying on her eggs, and it's really important to have a ready source of food. And we really appreciate that BVSD left the grass long for good habitat on your portion of the meadow. Thank you for that. And then in March, it's amazing, the eggs hatch, two to four eggs, and the babies learn to fly. It's incredible for the public to be able to stand on the path there and see this all going on. This is a picture from Twin Lakes that I'll present to you at the end of the talk here. Now the opportunity. The Owl Education Center, the BVSD Owl Education Center, would host thousands of school kids each year. There'd be a nature trail, interpretive signs, and there would be a full partnership between the community and the board. It would be a win-win, and we appreciate your help in making this happen and are willing to talk more at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, to the rest of our speakers signed up for public participation, we're going to move to the other items on our agenda, and then we will return to public participation at the conclusion of our meeting, and we thank you for your patience. The next item on our agenda is board communication. Any board members who would like to participate in board communication this evening? Going once. Richard?
Don't shut us down here.
Just going once.
I want to thank the students that came here, talked about the owls and the parents that followed with the students, and I want to thank all the parents that talked about dyslexia. And I also want to thank Celeste Performance in terms of really trying to advocate for Uni-Hill Elementary School. I guess I have a couple of things that I'd like to ask Sam regarding the feasibility study for University Hills Elementary School and the P-12 campus over at New Vista. I understand that we're going to get that this month completed?
That is my understanding as well, although if Dr. Messenger has any additional information.
And I reported to DAC on that, and that the board was seeking some robust community involvement after we get that feasibility study. And I also indicated that if the feasibility study is a no, that it just stops. But if it's a yes, then I think we should enter into that robust community engagement process that we need to get into. I didn't know anything about the owls until tonight, you know? And I, for one, would like to take a field trip to that place and see what it is, and enjoy it and understand it. And maybe we, as a board, could do that at some point so that we can truly understand the impact that whatever happens in that Twin Lakes and the effect it would have on the environment and all of that. And I don't know whether we've done any type of environmental impact study, if in fact the housing initiative was to go through. I would like to learn more about that. And I also want to report back a little bit on DAC, and dyslexia, by the way, excuse me. Have we done anything around dyslexia? I know that we've been talking about this for a long time, and we're talking about it again. Early screening tools, you know, what would that cost? The structured literacy program, what would that cost? What would the savings be as it reflects getting our kids reading as opposed to them dropping out of school, ending up in prison or wherever they go after that? So I think we need really, need to seriously start thinking about doing and having those conversations. I welcome, I welcome the invite in terms of participating in a much broader community discussion around dyslexia and getting a committee going to see what we can do about that. So those are my comments. And as it relates to DAC, a couple of things that I suggested to DAC when I went to DAC at the last meeting, and after talking with you, Sam, in terms... to DAC at the last meeting, and after talking with you, Sam, in terms of what should I report to DAC? Because DAC, you know, they, they set aside five minutes for a board presentation, and, and if you don't have one, then you don't have one. But, but then you feel kind of foolish to go to DAC and not have a board presentation. I thanked them very much for the recommendations on the budget priorities that they come up with, and that we would be waiting to hear their comments on the student resource allocation Then, after that, there was a presentation on the SRA, which created tons of questions in terms of the DAC participants that were there. Questions like, how would the dollars be allocated from this student resource allocation if, in fact, we were to allocate those dollars? Where will the money come from was a big question that they were all asking. And what would, what, what are the, what are the breakdowns in terms of the free and reduced lunch designations, the English language learner designations, the special ed designations, et cetera? And fortunately for us, that we had some administrators there that were able to plot, supply the answers to those, like in ELL, there's 10%. In SPED, there's about 11%. And then free and reduced lunch, they mentioned 21%. So they have a lot of questions around that. One of the things that also they want to know is, what have we done with the recommendations on the student privacy recommendations they gave us last year? What are we doing with that? Are we still sitting on that? We know that we're going to have a work session come April on student privacy. Are we going to be looking at whatever their recommendations were? And looking at how the statute has changed, and how, how are we marrying all that stuff together? So, I found it very, very informative going to the DAC meeting this time around, and, and actually, it was pretty exciting to see their excitement around the work that they do. And I want to commend the DAC Chair and, and the DAC Executive Committee for all that. But I do think we owe them some answers, okay? And I think we need to take those back to them. We want to discourage DAC from their participation because they're a volunteer group, just like we are, and they're doing everything they can to make sure that BVSD is the district that kids want to come to. So.
Thank you, Richard. Other board members? Tina?
Yeah, and, Richard, thank you for the DAC update. That's important. And I'm just going to add, while I remember, if you're ever looking for those kinds of numbers that say how many FRL, you know, IEP kids are in the district, and by school, there's a public document called the Special Program Summary on the BVSD website, and it actually has it broken down by school. And if you Google pupil count, it's on that same page. So it's just really handy, it's easy, and I have often given it to community members. It's, and it's kind of hard to find. So, I just wanted to also, I echo a lot of Richard's questions about dyslexia. I, I would, I would like to be reminded on why we're not doing screeners, and what is the, what's the philosophy behind that? And I would also like us to think about why there's kind of a disconnect in what, what, why funding more activities around dyslexia isn't a priority for the district, but it seems to be a priority for the parents. There seems to be a difference in, in thinking about what are the outcomes we're getting with kids that have dyslexia? And I think one of the ideas I heard was a working group or some kind of, I don't know if it's a group or if it's a one-time meeting, to share sort of what the expectations are around dyslexia, what the approaches are, what are the limitations that the district perceives versus what are the experiences that our parents and their students are having? It just seems like we're not together here. And I think we need to start doing some work to find out what isn't being shared with the community and with the district on what happens with students with dyslexia. And if there's a way to understand outcomes, if, if the district is able to measure that and show that, that would be great. I'm not, this is not my most coherent statement, but I think what I'm trying to say is, I think we have some work to do. And because we're, we are back here a year later, we do know that we've invested more into training for the Barton Program, and it was in Angel Stovas' presentation last June as a third, you know, tier-three literacy. But it would be interesting to know what we're doing beyond that because that has a pretty limited scope in terms of how many students it can serve. Also, the Owl Preservation Center, that was new. And so it would probably be good to get a Twin Lakes update in general. I think there are different ideas around Twin Lakes. And I'd also like to understand more about the cease and desist order on the Palel Parkway. I think that was a really old decision, so I don't know if it affects this board, but it seems that it's getting tied into the Twin Lakes conversation. So I don't know if we're going to hear about that or not, but that would be great. And then, echoing Uni Hill, an update would be great. And, and also, I just wanted to, on a, not related to the speakers this evening, I was able to attend a production of The House on Mango Street, which was done by a local group, the Local Theater. And they did this production just for middle school students at the public library. And it was a literacy-based event that married live theater production with writing. And I was able to do that with a group of about 100 kids from Manhattan Middle School. It was a really great example of a partnership in the community and a partner that's doing, really passionate about helping with literacy. I know Casey Middle School also attended. It was a great performance. And I also just wanted to, I'll, actually, I'll stop there. Perfect, thanks.
Thanks, Tina. Other board members? Oh, okay, anybody? Shelley?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who came to speak, and I hope those of you who haven't had a chance yet will stay and take your opportunity. We don't have that much on the agenda tonight, so I think that it shouldn't take too long to get through it. So I do hope you'll stay. I just want to thank the, everyone, but the dyslexic parents who came forward and experts in that field. I have learned so much since a year ago when I first heard from you. And I recently met with the BV Kids Group that's organized around this issue. And I, I learned a lot about the challenges that those kids are facing in our district and the kinds of things the district could be doing to help them. And it just seems to me that now we're, you know, we're in budget discussions right now, that there's probably not any intervention that we could do that would have as big a ripple effect throughout the district in terms of not just reading, but in, you know, all academic subjects. If you can read, you do better. Graduation rates, mental health, substance abuse. I mean, it just goes on and on, the, the kinds of things that we might be able to prevent if we spent some money doing this kind of screening and intervention. And one of the gentlemen with the group sent me the Ohio study that one of the parents referred to tonight. And I read that this afternoon, and the results that they, they got in Ohio with this dyslexia project are nothing short of amazing. I mean, basically, 100% of kids were passing their third-grade reading hurdle in Ohio. And, you know, that, that just, that's what we're all about, is getting kids off to a good start like that. And, I mean, it's basically the three things that people have been talking about: screening, awareness, because apparently, I mean, this kind of floored me, but apparently, some people don't even believe that dyslexia exists, which was, you know, hard for me to grasp. But, so there, there does need to be awareness training going on. And then this structured literacy approach that they use is basically, you know, I'll just sound really stupid here, but it's basically, you know, amped-up phonics. And it, it works for every kid, not just dyslexic kids. So it's not something that you would have to just figure out how to do with a few kids. You could replace our other reading interventions with structured literacy and quite potentially get better results with kids who don't have dyslexia. So I think it's worth giving it a try. I'm always a fan of pilots, you know? If we can't, you know, do it throughout the entire district. I mean, of course, there are kids in every school that need this, but if that's what it would take to prove that this works, then I think we ought to take that first step and, and at least pilot something in one or more schools to, to get this done. And so, again, I just want to thank all of you parents who, who have educated me on this. I would just feel really, really good if during my tenure on the school board, we could actually start to fix this problem. So, you know, thanks for giving me that incentive to think about that. As for the people here that support the, you know, a nature preserve at Twin Lakes, I think, Bruce, I'd just like to ask you what, I know the Planning Commission for the county's meeting tomorrow on this subject, and they will be taking a vote. And from that vote, they'll be making a recommendation to the county commissioners? Is, is that right? And then?
Has to be approved both by the county commissioners, which they've approved, and also the county commission, the planning commission, the PC.
Right. So, so when will this come to us? This decision?
That would be a decision of the board when they want, we've been waiting for the four governing bodies to rule on this, and so obviously, that has not been completed yet.
Okay. So, but we don't have to wait for that, right? We could at any time put this on the agenda to have a discussion about it. Okay. You know, I, I don't know how the board feels about the timing of that discussion with us, whether you would want to wait or have that sooner than later, but I'm willing to entertain it whenever, you know?
Yeah, it sounds like a topic for our quarterly planning session, perhaps next week. We can, one of the issues that we want to try to prioritize.
Yeah. And I think that, I don't know if you guys had a chance to see the video, but, I mean, it was pretty awesome for fifth and sixth graders to have put together, and I think it's an example of the, you know, the kind of really engaging projects that our kids could be doing, you know? I mean, and, and us encouraging because they're so passionate about it, and it was so professionally done, and it was pretty darn impressive, I thought. Yeah.
On the, on the Twin Lakes timeline, so it's, when's the earliest that the four governing bodies will all agree?
So it went to the county commissioners. County planning is looking at it, voting on it probably tomorrow. And then there's the City Planning Commission and the City Council. But I don't know that they have any specific deadline by which they have to act, if I'm wrong about that.
I think they postponed counting, waiting for the county.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, yeah, I don't, okay, we can talk about it quarterly. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Shelley. Anybody else? Nope? Okay. Well, and echo my appreciation for the members of public who showed up to express their views on a number of issues. We will move now to the action items consent grouping portion of our agenda. These include 6.1 Personnel Items, 6.2 Approval of Minutes, January 24th, 2017 Special Meeting, 6.3 Approval of Minutes, January 24th, 2017 Regular Meeting, 6.4 Acceptance of Donation, Food Services Department, 6.5 Acceptance of Donation, Heatherwood Elementary, 6.6 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Centaurus High School, 6.7 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Monarch High School, 6.8 Approval of Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Monarch K8 School, 6.9 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at the Alicia Sanchez International Elementary School renovation, 6.10 Fiber Lease Contract with Town of Netherlands, and 6.11 Grant Instructional Services and Equity Adult Education and Family Literacy, Colorado Department of Education, 17. Are there any items that board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve. Motion from Tina, second from Kathy. Discussion of any items on the consent agenda. Hearing none. Laura, could you call the vote on the consent agenda, please?
Bell Val is not present. Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Laura. I will move now to the study items on our agenda. We have three, beginning with 8.1, our charter policy. Dr. Messenger?
Thank you, Sam. So, as noted, the first study item is charter policy. District Attorney Melissa Barber's making her way to the podium. As has mentioned before, our effort around this is really to bring into policy both state statute as well as our practice. And so we've tried to capture this in our policy and regulation statement. So you've received this, it's attached to the electronic agenda. So, Melissa, if you would, please.
Okay. So the policy is relatively short, just two pages. So we haven't, this is a new policy for the district. We haven't had a formal board policy or regulation relating to charter schools. I would say the meat of the documents that you've been provided really are in the regulation. So the policy itself is pretty standard, really based on a CASB model policy, and it's really restating what's in the charter school law at a really high level in terms of the requirements for charter schools in general and the district relationship with the charter school. And then, just by way of background, I did provide that regulation that Cabinet's been looking at. And that's if we do get, so the heart of the, the regulation is really about if an application for a new charter comes in, how we as a district process that. And so a lot of the timelines are coming from state law. The contents in the application are in state law. There is a section for an annual review process for those charters that are already existing with a charter school contract, and then the renewal process, which, again, is coming straight out of state law. A new aspect of this is an expectation that potential applicants file an intent to apply for a charter application. So we have a little more lead time about what's coming to us, so we can start gearing up for how we're going to review the application. And in the state law is a window that applications can be submitted, and that's August 1st to October 1st. So since we haven't had a policy, we've been operating with the October 1st deadline. And this regulation would push it back to August 1st. So that gives us, excuse me, more time for considering the application. There's a 90-day period between the filing and the board decision on whether to accept the charter or not, and then another 90 days to get a contract in place if they're approved. So when you're talking about a charter opening the following school year, that, you know, period of time often gets extended a little bit by mutual agreement. So we're trying to push that window up a little bit. So if we do have a school opening, you know, a few months later, that there's, it works for everyone. So I can answer any questions?
Thanks, Melissa. Board members? Tina?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the part that says, or, that the student enrollment needs to be a majority of students in the district or in contiguous districts. And the reason is there is some language on SB 71, what was, 61, sorry, that talked about contiguous districts. And so a charter can, so can a charter apply with student enrollment that's 100% from, like Jefferson County?
Well, the, the way the statute's worded, if I'm remembering it correctly, is that you have to demonstrate that a majority of the students are from in district or contiguous district. So with that wording, I guess conceivably, that could be presented. I mean, then it would be up to the board, I think, because you're looking at whether that's a need that needs to be met with the district.
Right.
So I think it would probably come into play as you're reviewing the application.
And is that, do we know of anyone who's ever opened a charter school like that in the state? Is that?
Yes. There's one outside of Cheyenne Mountain that's outside of the district and is authorized by Cheyenne Mountain. So, there is.
And it's outside of their district? And do you know if they collect mill levy?
I don't know the full disclosure. They're actually, one of the districts that are carved out of Senate Bill 61, and also Denver Public Schools are exempted.
Okay.
Yeah. So, because of that unique situation with Cheyenne Mountain.
So if we ever had that happen, do you think we could get an exemption from sharing mill levy?
Well, I think, to Melissa's point, I think they have to demonstrate need in district, and so then if the board weren't to grant that as a district authorized school, they could make that application to the state to go through there, or they could appeal to the state board. I mean, I certainly think that would give merit to denying such application, but, I mean, ultimately, it could be the state board that would review that.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Tina. Other questions? All right. Thanks, Melissa.
We'll bring this back for action.
Okay. Our next study, study item is on the proposed fees. Dr. Messenger?
President Fuqua, members of the board, this is a little earlier in the planning cycle than we normally do. Usually, this is later in the spring, but it was upon the encouragement of our building administrators that we would bring this to you sooner. So Michelle DeBert- So, Michelle DeBerry, who's our executive director for secondary education, takes lead on this initiative. So, she was pleased, of course, that we crammed her timeline and asked her to move it up. So, we sent a memo, a couple memos, actually, in the last week to the Board of Education, and there is background included these. This is listed as a study item. It'll be scheduled back for action in a couple of weeks. As fees are approved by the board, it's an annual event, the communication to the parent and student population in a timely manner is appreciated, and so, you know, if the board were to take action in the next two weeks, that would be helpful to our schools as they plan, and put out handbooks and do registration and those kinds of things. So, with that, Michelle, if you want to give us a brief overview and explain what they've received in their packet, please.
Good evening. As Dr. Messenger indicated, we've been asked by the building principals to speed up the fees process so they can get the information out to the parents in a timely fashion. It is our intent for the 1819 school year to actually bring these fees to you in September of 2017 along with the new course proposals. So, we will align those two processes together. This will allow us to get the fees adopted and then included in registration materials in a timely fashion rather than publish to the families after they've registered for classes. This year, we did send out a couple memos in January, sent the process out to the system principals, support staff, and principals, asking them to share it with their staff. There was a document that was created from the staff requests for fees, and then that was reviewed by the individual principals of the fees that were proposed in their building, as well as all principals saw off all fees. The curriculum and instruction department got to provide feedback on appropriateness of the fees, and ultimately, the 52 fees were whittled down to the seven fees that you see in front of us that are changes to current fees. So, these fees have been approved at an amount prior to this, and we are asking for the fee to be increased. And then there are 12 new fees that are being proposed that have not previously been on the approved fee list. So, I'm open to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Questions from Michelle or Dr. Messenger? Tina?
Yeah, for the one-to-web fee, is that grade level specific?
So, I'm going to ask Andrew to come and speak to that.
President Fuqua, members of the board, Dr. Messenger, I'm happy to answer questions about the one-to-web fee. There is no grade level. It's at the discretion of the principal to decide whether they want to enact the fee. Having said that, we have no intention of moving past the high schools in the incoming year simply because of resources. You may recall, we have also started DTAC, the District Technology Advisory Committee, and I anticipate this topic to move it further down to the middle schools and elementary schools to play out over the next year.
One of the things I read in the DTAC committee update, thank you for providing that, that was really helpful, was that there'll be a separate sort of working group that's looking at how to integrate technology in the elementary level. I would feel more comfortable if the fee said from fourth grade and above, but I don't know if that's a possibility.
So, would this, on the one-to-web, would this fee then, if it was enacted by the principal, would that be mandatory for all students in the school?
So, it would be mandatory in the sense that it would be available. What's interesting from our learnings from Centaurus and Broomfield is that there were a few, less than a handful of parents that opted out, that later opted in. And so, I think that's going to ultimately be a parental decision on whether they, you know, decide to accept the device. We've just seen wide adoption across all the grade levels that we've already rolled it out to.
So, it's not mandatory, any parent could say, "I don't want to do it."
Yes.
And bring their own device.
So, we do not have a policy that prevents BYOD or Bring Your Own Device. In fact, Monarch High School has a BYOD program today. The challenge, and we do explain this to the parents and the staff before we ever roll out one-to-web, is that when assessment time comes, BYOD devices cannot be used for assessment where the district provided devices can be used for assessments.
So, can a student then not have a device at all? Just opt, "I'm not going to do that"? What would be the impact?
So, I'll defer to Dr. Messenger.
Well, I would say every building has an inventory of devices, and most of the cases recently, that's been Chromebooks, and so I think if, that would just need to be managed by the building administration and staff. If they're doing class activities, I would assume they would check out a Chromebook from the cart or something like we do now. I mean, it might not be able to be taken home, so there might be some limitations. And, of course, like all of our fees, we support students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, I mean, any fee, not just this fee, but that would be the case. So, if it were a financial hardship that folks couldn't participate, that would be addressed through our own policy, a different policy.
Yeah. My question really gets down to, is, for a school that opts to do one-to-web, is a device required for them to get instruction? If they don't have a device at all or don't want to have a device, are they not going to be able to get the appropriate instruction in the core classes?
I think that many of our classrooms are using to the use of the technology devices, so I think there'd be some handicap around that, just as if a student chose not to open a textbook. I suppose they could choose not to do that, but I think they'd probably be handicapped if they didn't open the textbook that was provided by the school, or if they went to a wood shop and opted not to use the woodworking equipment, they'd be handicapped. So, I mean, I think as we become more, integrate technology more in our school system, I think if folks are just opposed to any use of technology, there would be some handicap around that. I wouldn't say it's impossible, but it could be.
That's not really a good analogy. I mean, we provide a textbook. We don't ask them to pay for a textbook in our core, you know, classes. That's really not a good analogy. If we're using that device as a textbook, it's an integral part of core learning, then we can't charge a mandatory fee for it per our policies or state law. And I've seen the analysis, and I really don't agree with that. As I look through our fee structure, our policies, I think this is something that's really forbidden to charge a fee for mandatory core class. So, and this has come up before, and we've had discussions about this, this is not the first time. But, so, I'm not in favor of charging a mandatory fee for that type of program when you've got to have the device to be able to participate in your core subjects' learning environment.
I misunderstood your question, Tom. I thought you meant they refuse to use a device.
Well...
If they're willing to use a device, we will issue them a device, even if they don't pay for the fee. I mean, I think that was Andrew's point. So, we have Chromebooks in all of our buildings right now. So, if a 10th grader said, their parents said, "We don't want to pay the fee," we would have a device to provide for them.
So, it's really not a mandatory fee?
I think Andrew explained that it's an expectation, just like all of our fees, but we'll work with families if they aren't able to or choose not to.
Yeah. And then I wouldn't want it on the mandatory fee list if it's not a mandatory fee. I mean, all of our schools, special elementary schools, ask parents for donations, but it's not mandatory. And I think it should fall in that same realm and not be a mandatory fee. So, in that sense, to put it on our fee list as a mandatory fee, I don't think is appropriate.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Other questions or comments, board members? Shelley?
I'd just like to 100% agree with Tom. We've had this discussion before, and I think it came up last year, maybe even the year before as well. I just completely disagree with the interpretation that this is an expendable supply. You know, this is a depreciable asset. It doesn't meet the spirit of the policy or the spirit of the law that prevents kids from having to pay for things that pay for their education, when this is supposed to be a free public education. So, yeah, I don't think this should be on the list of fees. I also think that if, one-to-web is something this board really wants to see in this district, then we should put it on the list, and we should prioritize it above kids that have dyslexia, above counselors, above class size, above all the things that this is going to take money away from. And we should just call it what it is, and we shouldn't try and sneak it under the radar and charge parents a fee to do something that we haven't prioritized as a board.
Tina?
Have other districts listed things like Chromebooks as mandatory fees?
Listen, I don't know if you found in your research where that we know the answer to that question. We certainly could inquire with our peer districts. St. Vrain just provides them out of the general fund, so that'd be another option.
I'm just wondering if anyone's done it as a fee, just if there's any precedent in our state?
I'm not aware, one way or the other. I haven't done the research. You know, I certainly understand all the comments that are being made. I also watch the digital divide in this district. At Monarch High School, for example, there's a requirement, whether you call it a fee, whether you call it something else, there's a requirement to Bring Your Own Device. And in a lot of ways, that's very similar to what we're doing, except that what we're saying is that we will provide a standardized device for students. Whether we move forward or not, schools are doing this. And unfortunately, it's happening just at the schools that can afford to, to make it happen. And so, we're hopeful that the fee would be able to eliminate that digital divide and bring some equity across our entire district.
Okay. Well, I would like to know if other districts have been able to do this.
We certainly could send an inquiry out to our peer districts.
And is there, like, where do you go to check? Like, who can you ask, you know, if you have a concern like Shelley and Tom? Like, who's the person who sets the standard for these fees? Which, who, you know what I'm saying? Like, who do you go and ask that question? Is that a legal question for counsel, or...
Yeah, you were offered a legal opinion from Melissa Barber. It was in your materials that we sent out yesterday, and so we can seek further counsel if you'd like that. I trust Melissa's research.
I mean, maybe just another, I mean, I do too, but maybe just one other opinion that's not in the district or something.
We can ask Dick's Law for a way in on this if you'd like. I think Dick's actually reviewed our opinion, but we can ask him to weigh in if you'd like.
Okay. And if he's reviewed it, if you could just forward that, that would be great.
Other questions, comments? Kathy?
So, you're a freshman parent, and you pay the $40, and then the next year you don't want to. Do you have to return the Chromebook?
That's a great question. I doubt it, I think to Dr. Messenger's point earlier, if there are families that just say, "No, I'm not going to pay this." We have devices that we would, we would work with them to ensure that that student was not caught in the middle of whatever that discussion is. Now, we have five years of experience doing this now, three at Broomfield and two at Centaurus, and that scenario has not played out. But that's not to say that we won't have some parents that, you know, do exactly what you're suggesting.
Or a parent that goes Monarch, right? Says, "I'll pay for it," and then decides that their own device is more useful, so doesn't want to pay the $40, it wants to bring their own device to school. Does that...
So, at Monarch, they probably, the principal probably would not enact this fee. They would probably continue with their BYOD program, although it would be at the principal's discretion. So, Jerry Anderson, in that case, could choose to enact the fee, and then her next incoming freshman class, not the rest of the school, but the incoming freshman class, would then be under this fee, but only at the discretion of her judgment.
But my question was more in a school where you're implementing this. So, freshman year, a parent does it, sophomore year, the parent wants the child to not use a Chromebook but to bring in their own device.
Yes.
They have that ability to do that?
Yes.
And then if that parent, the child is going to be tested, you would provide the Chromebook for the testing. That's what you're doing at Monarch, right? So, the children aren't going without the Chromebook for being tested.
That is correct. So, at Monarch, we pulled money from the equity fund, which we no longer have the equity fund, but this was three years ago, and we bought Chromebooks for Monarch out of the equity fund so that they would have devices for testing.
Because what I worry about a little bit is that we need, if we do this, parents need to know that it's not just, this is a four-year commitment that they're making, so it's not a year-to-year commitment, is what you're hoping for, because otherwise you can't pay for the Chromebook.
That is correct, and the evidence we have as far as the adoption, not paying the fee, of course, but the adoption, has been good. But I think you're right. I think we would need to look at this over the next few years, assuming the fee is passed, and to see if parents are paying it in the first year and then deciding they don't want to pay it, because it's not a sustainable model if that were to happen, and we would have to come back to the drawing board. To roll it out at all the high schools, it's roughly about $800,000 a year that's necessary to sustain the program. So, that's just kind of a point of reference if, you know, there wasn't a fee, but you wanted to do it through some other mechanism.
Does that $800,000 include training? Or is that just the device cost?
That's the device cost. However, it would free up a little bit of money that's already in the budget that's buying devices today in order for us to be able to get the resources necessary to provide that level of training.
And if we adopted this fee, would all the high schools be able to come online next year?
So, we believe we can do Boulder High, New Vista, and Netherland if they chose to do so. At this point, we do not believe that Fairview is interested in moving forward. I've spoken to Don Stensrude since our last meeting. He would like to implement an alternative model, and I said I'm open to have that discussion once we get the core model up and running, just because there's so much demand and so much inequity that we need, in my opinion, to solve that problem first.
Okay. It was at parent-teacher conferences at Fairview and have had similar conversations and reached different conclusions, so maybe we just need to have that conversation offline.
Yeah. If Fairview was ready to go forward, we would sit down and try to get them all. We'd have to take a step back and figure out exactly what the training would look like for that. And I want to stress the training. I mean, we're talking about the cost for the device. The device is just the device. There is really much more emphasis put on the training, both for the teachers, for the administrative staff, and maybe most importantly, for the parents, so that these programs are rolled out in a very consistent, well-thought-out manner. You know, we don't want just devices out there because they will not get utilized to the degree they could if the training was not provided.
Any other questions, board members? Yes, Shelley?
I'd just like to add that this push for one-to-web programs in the district is way out ahead of our student data privacy policy, which doesn't really exist right now. And as far as I know, Chrome Sync is still activated on these devices, which allows students' browsing history and other things that they do on the computer to be accessed by any number of parties, including educational technology companies for use for all sorts of purposes. And I'm never going to be a proponent of this as long as that's happening on those Chromebooks.
So, just for clarification, Chrome Sync is turned on, but Google is now bound by the state law. They cannot share that data with other ed tech companies or any other company because the state law says that they cannot share that data.
Whether they share it or not, they have it, which is also not good. There's no reason that Google needs to know what our kids are searching for on a browser. They're supposed to be providing educational services that we would otherwise provide. That's the definition of a school official. They do not need our kids' browsing history. And many other districts have turned off Chrome Sync, and I think we should be doing that if we're even considering one-to-web programs.
Other questions, board members? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Michelle. Okay.
We'll bring this back for action.
If you have additional questions, please communicate by email. Okay. Looking for more study.
I think it still needs a little more study, Bruce, before you bring it back for action. No, the tech fee.
We can do a check-in. Coming back on action in two weeks. Tom?
I'm not in favor of the tech fee, so if it comes back, I will vote against it.
Kathy?
I need more information, like I said, offline, on how this is going to impact some schools.
Tina?
Whatever, anyone, if people need more time, that's fine with me.
Okay. Shelley? I think you made yourself clear, but please.
Well, I think if the time resulted in any new information or any better definition of why this should, you know, qualifies as a mandatory fee, then, you know, I'd be willing to listen to that, but that's sort of a separate argument to one-to-web at all. You know, they're two different arguments, so I think they both need to be discussed, and if it comes back as a mandatory fee, I'll vote against it.
Okay. Richard?
I agree. More time?
More time? Okay. I think it is the pleasure of the board, Dr. Messenger. Take a little more time to discuss this.
We have questions. I've got Tina's question. She's going to have to wait until we forward it. Dick bump, are there other questions? Maybe Kathy, you can touch base with me tomorrow, and maybe we can get that done in two weeks.
Yeah, but I did not hear anybody want to hold off approving all the other fees, so. Did I, board members? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you, everybody.
But I always feel like it would be useful for us to see what the community is doing
I'm sorry, just five minutes. I'm sorry, just five minutes. A couple of us need to take a very short break, and then we'll be back with the rest A couple of us need to take a very short break, and then we'll be back with the rest
with the BVSD kids as a group.
of our meeting. of our meeting.
And I'm not sure how you guys would feel about that, but maybe just from time to time have, and maybe just limit it to ten to fifteen minutes or something like that.
Okay. We can check in on that also next week, but it's a, I'm open to the idea. Richard?
Are we going to do any follow-up on the resolution on the field trips to?
Yeah, that is also one of the topics for next week. And if it's the pleasure of the board at that time when we prioritize our items to move that forward, we'll move it forward.
Thank you.
And I think we can move it forward fairly quickly.
And are we doing anything in terms of the divestment of activities with Wells Fargo?
I don't have that on the list, but we can certainly talk about it. I think where, yeah, we left that was.
It's going to the audit committee. We're doing a request for proposal for banking service. It'll be considered at that time.
Yeah. Kathy, then Tina?
Kind of along the lines of what Tina said. I had a request from Front Range Community College to be able to do a presentation about what they, their partnerships and things they're offering, and it seems like it's similar to what you were saying. So, I'd just like to see if that's something the board would be interested in.
Thanks. And, yeah, Shelley?
On that topic, I know last year I asked if a group called Yes could come and speak to the board. These are high schoolers with dyslexia, talking about how certain programs have helped them. And the district said that that was not allowed. So, I think that if we're going to be doing this, we need to be consistent about who's allowed and who's not allowed, and have some policy around that.
Yeah, fair enough. Tom?
I would like to either have a work session, probably a work session would be best, or perhaps their information item on, you know, dyslexia. We had parents and advocates come last year. We talked about this, tried to do a little bit in the budget. I'd like to find out what we did last year, what we're planning to do this year, and what the adequacy of that is. Obviously, the folks that spoke to us tonight don't believe what we're doing is adequate at all. And so, I think we need some open transparency around this and where things fit in the budget this year. It wasn't clear to me last year where those fit in. Also, with regards to transparency, I would like to have similar discussions around Twin Lakes and Uni Hills, so we can get some of that transparency out and going. And we could do that work session, so we could do a one-to-work session, for example.
Thank you. Kathy?
I don't see a CBAC update on here.
Those are calendared, I thought. Quarterly? Yeah. But the, quarterly, yeah. Yeah, it might, yeah, I guess it just didn't make the list, but yeah.
And I was going to also ask for some, just some information about the, what we're doing with dyslexia and related to my public comment. So, trying to find out if we can come to agreement with the community on a direction so that we're all heading in the same direction, we understand what that is.
Okay. Well, so, let's start with questions to the superintendent, and then at our quarterly planning session, we can also discuss a work session, as Tom suggested. Anything else? Yes, Richard?
Sam, on the community presentations, there are so many out there, you know. I know of two in particular. The Community Foundation has a great project going in terms of the El Paso Program. Then you have the Colorado State White Parent Coalition that has the Paso Program. There's many, 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 and I think we need to figure out how.
Yes.
When and what.
I think we all want to hear from all these organizations that have been listed, and many more. The question will be how that happens logistically, given our very full calendar. Kathy?
Correct, which is if we open this door, we need a policy, because otherwise, I don't know how we decide what we're going to do.
Right. Other than the time allotted at the top of meetings. Yeah. Okay, anything else, board members? All right, we'll move to the final item on our agenda, which is the continuation of our public participation. Next up is Erin Nelson. Ms. Nelson, thank you for your patience and welcome.
Thank you, board members who have already acknowledged the parents of dyslexic students who have come up to talk and the hard work of BV Kid. My name is Erin Nelson. I have two kids in Boulder Valley. I have a ten-year-old son who is dyslexic. He went through Childfind at the age of four and was identified as a preschooler with a disability. I wish I knew then what I know now. Although we had many of the warning signs of dyslexia, no one at Childfind or his new special education preschool teacher told us he might have dyslexia. But I know now that children as young as five can be screened with ninety-five percent
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thanks, everybody, for that short break.
accuracy for dyslexia. When my son entered elementary school, he qualified for an IEP. At the end of first grade, he did not know his entire alphabet, much less the sounds the letters made, and forget writing. I asked his special ed teacher, "Could he have dyslexia?" Her answer was, "We don't use the term dyslexia anymore." Although she did not say he doesn't have dyslexia, as a mom, that is what I heard. What I know now is that twenty percent of the population has dyslexia, which makes it the most common learning disability. Later that same year, my husband and I were told that we were so lucky because our son has qualified to do LLI, which is the special reading program BVSD was offering. I know now that there has been decades of research led by the NIH into how to teach dyslexic students to read, and LLI is not appropriate. We eventually took matters into our own hands and enrolled him into a private school that provides appropriate instruction for dyslexic students. I can't turn back the clock for my own son, but I'm here to advocate for future families in BVSD. We need three things. We need to screen all kindergartners and new students. We need evidence-based structured literacy for all students shown to be at risk. And we need professional development on dyslexia to all BVSD staff, all the way up through high school and all administrators. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gina Lesh, who has been given an additional two minutes from Stephanie Swope. Ms. Lesh, good evening, welcome.
Hi, Happy Valentine's Day. I'm spending my fourth date night in Rome with you people, so, but I thank you for your time. And I'm just here because I wanted, like many of the people who've spoke today, I wanted to advocate for children in BVSD who have learning differences. However, my take is a little bit different. I'm not here to complain. I am here to commend the district for getting it right. The ICAM program at Mesa is a wonderful program that is working well. It's helping children with learning differences excel. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update. The district has given us no information or discussion about continuing the program in its current location or explain or show to us how the decision was made to move the program. We're still asking for transparency. We've not received anything. The families fighting to stay have been offered one para to be shared by the children. While we are happy to see that they're working to keep the children in this place, that they love, that they're excelling, this is still not the very best option. My son and I know the other children were all on one-on-one paras previously before they got into the ICAM program. That's how we ended up here. They were not successful, it was a complete disaster. So, we're obviously very nervous of sharing a para between these children. And what if these kids have very bad days all at the same time? How are they going to accommodate them? With the ICAM program, we currently have, I believe, four that can be their kind of beck and call whichever child's needing it. My husband's going to show you some data around this move that they have promoted. However, I want you to know that I have been contacted by two families just in the last month. One is from out of state who is accepting a job in Boulder. Their son has the exact same diagnosis as mine and is in first grade. They obviously have heard about Mesa and they want their son to go to the ICAM program. Another family, who one is here this evening, have a profoundly gifted son with high emotional needs, who is, they've been homeschooling, they had him in private school previously. They want to get him in to BVSD. He's open and enrolled to go to Mesa next year. And they work in Boulder, they live in Superior, and they have a child who goes to school in South Boulder. What is going to be the plan when this child gets into this school if his emotional needs can't be met? They do not want him bust out to Erie. It doesn't make sense for their family. Even to try and fit him in Crestview, which was at capacity just last year, is going to be completely out of their way. And these are just two that have contacted me. I am sure there are going to be others. So, what I'm here to say is surely keeping this wildly successful program in this school of advantage is not only in my son's best interest, but many other families' like my own. Please either provide some funds in this budget that can add another ICAM program for the growth that this district is having, or maintain the program at Mesa, put off the elementary portion that is intended to go out to Meadowlark until there's actually funding or the population to really allow it. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brad Lesh, who has been given an additional two minutes from Jerry Martin. Mr. Lesh, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I had no idea this was the place to be on Valentine's, but apparently it was. You all have a packet like this. I tried to put together some demographic information. My name's Brad Lesh. I'm the father of a fourth-grade ICAM student at Mesa Elementary. The board had asked at the prior two meetings for some information about where the population is coming from, where it's going, and so forth within the district. So, what I tried to do with this presentation is take it at a Boulder County level, work it down into BVSD, because not all of Boulder County falls under BVSD, and then further funnel it down into ICAM, to try to give you a feel for where the population is growing and what's happening, and maybe a predictor for future needs. So, I'm using the same data. This all came from the Department of Local Affairs, Colorado Department of Local Affairs. I use the same data. I just remove certain pieces as I go through the presentation. So, the first page here is just really general population of Boulder County. And the blue line there just shows that the population is increasing in all periods reviewed, and this is from July 2010 through July 2015. The population growth, it's been about just under twenty-four thousand people. The bulk of that has happened in Boulder, Longmont. However, Longmont falls under St. Verane, a large portion of it, even though it's Boulder County. So, I kind of further went through and removed Longmont in future slides, but then followed by Lafayette, Lewisville, Superior, unincorporated Boulder, and then Erie. And then the mountain towns actually had a contraction. The next slide is removing Longmont. So, again, I'm showing total population excluding Longmont, still in excess of two-hundred thousand people, and still showing the same trendline projections of increasing population for the county. The next slide, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking so quickly, but I'm happy to take any questions on this. But the next slide removes the total population so that you can see where the actual population is. The red line there is Boulder. Second largest is unincorporated Boulder, Lafayette, Lewisville, Superior, Erie, and then followed by the mountain towns. It shows the population in the ICAM elementaries. I've excluded Nederlin for geographic reasons, just because they require their own ICAM program because they're so far removed geographically from the rest of Boulder County. There's three existing programs, Crestview, Mesa, and Birch. And as of last year, all three of those programs were at capacity. This year, neither is, none of the programs is at capacity, but I don't know how they've been affected through proposed moves and if children have been directed to one program or another without.
I'm spending my fourth date night in a row with you people. So, but I thank you for your time. And I'm just here because I wanted, like many of the people who've spoke today, I wanted to advocate for children in BVSD who have learning differences. However, my take is a little bit different. I'm not here to complain. I am here to commend the district for getting it right. The ICAM program at Mesa is a wonderful program that is working well. It's helping children with learning differences excel. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update. The district has given us no information or discussion about continuing the program in its current location or explain or show to us how the decision was made to move the program. We're still asking for transparency. We've not received anything. The families fighting to stay have been offered one para to be shared by the children. While we are happy to see that they're working to keep the children in this place that they love, that they're excelling, this is still not the very best option. My son and I know the other children were all on one-on-one paras previously before they got into the ICAM program. That's how we ended up here. They were not successful. It was a complete disaster. So we're obviously very nervous of sharing a para between these children. And what if these kids have very bad days all at the same time? How are they going to accommodate them? With the ICAM program, we currently have, I believe, four that can be their kind of a beck and call whichever child's needing it. My husband's going to show you some data around this move that they have promoted. However, I want you to know that I have been contacted by two families just in the last month. One is from out of state who is accepting a job in Boulder. Their son has the exact same diagnosis as mine and is in first grade. They obviously have heard about Mesa and they want their son to go to the ICAM program. Another family, who one is here this evening, have a profoundly gifted son with high emotional needs, who is, they've been homeschooling. They had him in private school previously. They want to get him in to BVSD. He's open and enrolled to go to Mesa next year. And they work in Boulder, they live in Superior, and they have a child who goes to school in South Boulder. What is going to be the plan when this child gets into this school if his emotional needs can't be met? They do not want him bussed out to Erie. It doesn't make sense for their family. Even to try and fit him in Crestview, which was at capacity just last year, is going to be completely out of their way. And these are just two that have contacted me. I am sure there are going to be others. So what I'm here to say is surely keeping this wildly successful program in this school of advantage is not only in my son's best interest, but many other families like my own. Please either provide some funds in this budget that can add another ICAM program for the growth that this district is having, or maintain the program at Mesa. Put off the elementary portion that is intended to go out to Meadowlark until there's actually funding or the population to really allow it. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brad Lesch, who has been given an additional two minutes from Jerry Martin. Mr. Lesch, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I had no idea this was the place to be on Valentine's, but apparently it was. You all have a packet like this. I tried to put together some demographic information. My name's Brad Lesch. I'm the father of a fourth-grade ICAM student at Mesa Elementary. The board had asked at the prior two meetings for some information about where the population is coming from, where it's going, and so forth within the district. So what I tried to do with this presentation is take it at a Boulder County level, work it down into BVSD, because not all of Boulder County falls under BVSD, and then further funnel it down into ICAN to try to give you a feel for where the population is growing and what's happening, and maybe a predictor for future needs. So using the same data, this all came from the Department of Local Affairs, Colorado Department of Local Affairs. I use the same data. I just remove certain pieces as I go through the presentation. So the first page here is just really general population of Boulder County. And the blue line there just shows that the population is increasing in all periods reviewed, and this is from July 2010 through July 2015. The population growth, it's been about just under 24,000 people. The bulk of that has happened in Boulder, Longmont. However, Longmont falls under St. Vrain, a large portion of it, even though it's Boulder County. So I kind of further went through and removed Longmont in future slides, but then followed by Lafayette, Lewisville Superior, unincorporated Boulder, and then Erie. And then the mountain towns actually had a contraction. The next slide is removing Longmont. So again, I'm showing total population excluding Longmont, still in excess of 200,000 people, and still showing the same trend line projections of increasing population for the county. The next slide, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking so quickly, but I'm happy to take any questions on this. But the next slide removes the total population so that you can see where the actual population is. The red line there is Boulder. Second largest is unincorporated Boulder, Lafayette, Lewisville Superior, Erie, and then followed by the mountain towns. If you get to this slide here, this is the ICAM program. So I did an open record request from BVSD, and they provided me with this information. It shows the population in the ICAM elementaries. I've excluded Nederland for geographic reasons, just because they require their own ICAM program because they're so far removed geographically from the rest of Boulder County. There's three existing programs, Crestview, Mesa, and Birch. And as of last year, all three of those programs were at capacity. This year, neither is, none of the programs is at capacity. But I don't know how they've been affected through proposed moves and if children have been directed to one program or another without it. But clearly, I put the trend line in here as well, too. So clearly, the five-year trend line is still on an upward trajectory, even though this last year appears to be more of an anomaly. This, I think, is the most important slide in that presentation. What I attempted to do here is take the population numbers and plot them by dot, one dot equalling 1,000 people. As to where the population is today that's serving, that's being served by BVSD. And then on that, those four pinkish circles identify the three schools, Crestview, Mesa, and Birch, and then the proposed Meadowlark School. So I'm trying to show where the population exists today. And if we remove that Mesa circle, we're going to leave a huge section of South Boulder, Lewisville, Superior, where there is a high density of the population without services. All of those kids would then have to be bused somewhere, whether it be Birch, Crestview, or out to Erie, which, you know, for most people is not convenient. I know I work in Boulder. I'm able to drive my son into Mesa. I would not be able to do that out to Erie. The last piece that I'll make a couple of comments on is the summary conclusions page, second to the last. Again, BVSD highest population density is in Boulder and along the Highway 36 corridor. As early as last year, all three of the existing programs were at capacity. And then moving the Mesa ICAN to Meadowlark will create additional burdens for a very large portion of the population in South Boulder, Lewisville and Superior, which is one of the areas that's growing the quickest. We're not against putting a program out in Erie. We're just not. But it shouldn't be done at the expense of the families in BVSD and South Boulder. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe our final speaker tonight is Tara Dubar. Ms. Dubar, have you stayed with us? If not, I believe that concludes public participation. And I appreciate you staying around for this second half. With that, board members, we'll conclude the meeting. And we'll see some of you Thursday for our tour of the kindergartens. We're adjourned.